Okay, so we can go ahead and get started with the homework review session for the applications of logarithmic and exponential functions. So this homework is due tonight, which is November 20th. I'll just go through the problems that I didn't go through in the video lectures. So I'll go ahead and have the notes pulled up over here. And we'll go through any problems that I did not talk about in the in the notes. So I believe I did not discuss this problem. So I'll go ahead and do this problem first. The number one from the homework. So it starts off by giving us a it gives us an exponential function. They call it P of T is equal to 800 e raised to 0.06T. And from here, we're going to for part A. For part A, they just want us to determine what the value is at T is equal to zero. And so what that means is simply we plug in zero for T and you want to make sure you plug this in correctly. So that means primarily make sure you put parentheses around the exponent of your yeah, just parentheses around your exponent. And if you do all that correctly, really, you should just get 800. Because the zero will make the whole exponent zero. And then e raised to the zero is one. So we just get 800 there. So I can go ahead and put 800 here. And we can move on to part B. And then it wants us to determine the growth rate. So the growth rate is actually part of the formula. So the rate is part of the pert formula. So P e raised to the RT, so R would represent the the rate. So really, the rate is 0.06. But they want this as a percentage. So that's why I'm going to rewrite it as a percentage as simply six. So that's all they want for part B, just the rates. As a percentage. For part C, they want us to determine what the population is after 10 days. So 10 is time. So we're going to be for part C, plugging 10 in for T and seeing what answer we get. And so this one should be fairly simple. 0.06 times 10. So we're just plugging in 10 for T. And again, make sure you put your exponent in parentheses. And if you type everything into your calculator correctly. What I get and they want to the nearest whole number. 1, 4, 5, looks like 8. 1, 4, 5, 8. Okay. So make sure you type in everything correctly. And if you do, you should get that answer. Now it starts to get a little bit trickier. Because for part D, they don't give us the amount of time. They give us the number of insects and we have to figure out the time, which means that we're going to use a considerable amount of algebra here. So for part D, they're telling us that the function is set equal to 960. So 960 is equal to 800 e raised to the 0.06T. And from there, we are going to go ahead and work this problem out and solve for T. Now, the first thing we have to do is get the exponential function by itself. The exponential function would be by itself with the mere exception that the 800 is getting in the way. So we need to divide the 800 because it's currently being multiplied to the exponential. So we have to divide it to move it to the other side. And so from there, 960 divided by 800 is just 1.2. So that's just 1.2 is equal to what now simplifies to e raised to the point 06T like that. And now, since we have the exponential by itself, we can use logarithms to remove the base and get the exponent freed, in other words, because the variable is in the exponent. So what we need to do, so right now, E is getting in the way. So we need to apply the natural log to both sides in order for the natural log in the E to cancel. And from there, we now have that natural log of 1.2 is equal to 0.06T. And then finally, we can divide both sides by point 06. And we will have T by itself. So T would be natural log of 1.2. So that's 1.2 divided by 0.06. And all we have to do is throw that in the calculator. So natural log of 1.2 divided by point 06. So we are rounding this to the nearest 10th. So that's 3.0. Exactly. The nearest 10th is just one decimal place. So then finally, we just need to figure out when the population will double. Now something. Okay, I I'm thinking of something else. All right, sorry. So for the population to double, so we're on to part E. Yeah, it wants us to determine when the population doubles. So the initial population we found was 800. So the final population is going to be, well, 1600 because they want the population to double. So that's why I'm going to put 1600 is equal to 800 e raised to the 0.06 times T. Notice 1600 simply because that is twice as much as 800. And so we're going to solve this the same way as the previous part. Just it's instead of 960, it's 1600. So we're still going to divide both sides by 800. And 1600 divided by 800 is obviously 2. So that's 2 is equal to e to the 0.06T. And like we did before, we can apply the natural log. The natural log to both sides. So that with the natural log in the E will cancel out yet again, just like in the previous part. And so we get that ln of 2 is equal to 0.06 times T. And finally, all we have to do to get T by itself is divide both sides by 0.06. And so we can throw this in the calculator. And what you should get? We need to round to the nearest 10th, so it's going to be 11.6. And so that would conclude problem one here from the homework. So let's go ahead and pull up another problem. I may not have talked about. So I did talk about this one, this one's example one. So I'll go ahead and skip that one. And let me make sure. So we'll come back to problem three here. All right, so I know I know it for. Okay, so we'll go ahead and talk about problem three. Which should be fairly similar to the population of a southern city problem that I have. In fact, I already have the first part already answered. It's just a notation aspect, it just wants the notation. So for part A. So let's just go ahead and start this on a new page. So we're on problem three from the homework. And the first thing, so for part A, it's the pert formula, but they specifically want the notation as N with a little zero next to it. And then e raised to the KT like that. Because they do specify, consider N with the little zero or N naught, as it's normally called, is the original amount. And so again, it's just a notation thing. So don't get too bogged down by part A. So part B, they tell us that there's 1,000 mosquitoes initially. And then there's 13,000 after one day. So I'm going to write that information down. So 1,000 to 1,300 after one day. And so they want us to determine the size after three days. Now, something you might notice is we don't know what the rate is throughout this problem. We are not given the rate, which means we need to determine the rates. As you will notice with a good bit of problems moving forward, that you will have to first find the rates. And then you can use that to determine other values moving forward. So the rate, I have the formula for it in the notes. In fact, it's a it's right here, because I went ahead and zoomed in on the formula. So I'm going to go ahead and rewrite that formula. So the rate is equal to the natural log of the final amount divided by the initial amount. All of that within the natural log. And then divide that by T. And that's how to find the rate in an exponential growth or decay problem, if you do not know the rate. So the information that I wrote down right above goes in perfectly. The final amount is 1,300. The initial amount is 1,000. And the time is one day. And normally, I suggest not simplifying this until the very end. If you do put this in your calculator, you're going to get a very elongated decimal. So if you use the decimal form, you need to make sure you use a lot of digits in your decimal. In my situation, I'm going to put natural log of 1.3. Because 1,300 divided by 1,000 is just 1.3. And it's a nice number. Again, if you decide to use natural log of 1.3, that decimal approximation in the calculator, then you need to make sure you use a lot of digits, so you don't round too quickly. So now that we have the rates, and we're not done yet, the rate will help us find everything else, though. Now that we have the rate, now we need to figure out the size after three days. So we need to figure out the size after after three days. And so we know that the original amount is 1,000. So we're using the pert formula. The original amount is 1,000, that's e raised to the the rate that we found was natural log of 1.3. And the time is three days. So we're plugging everything into the pert formula. And notice I'm putting parentheses around the exponent, just to tell you to do that in your calculator. 1,000 e raised to the natural log of 1.3, close parentheses, times 3, close parentheses again. And what you should get is exactly 2,197. And so that tells us the population of mosquitoes is going to be at 2,197 after three days. So notice, we had to find the rates first in order to figure out all the other values. So that is something that you should be expected to do if the rate is not given in a problem. You need to first find the rates and then find what other what other value you're looking for. So for part C, how long is it until there's 70,000 mosquitoes? So for part C here, they are telling you to set the equation equal to 70,000. 1,000 is still the original. We know that the rate is natural log of 1.3. And T is now the unknown that we're looking for. So T is in the exponent. So we want to eventually think about using logarithms to fish the variable out of the exponent. The problem is, the exponent is not isolated yet. We have to first divide both sides by 1,000 to get the exponential by itself. And so we just get 70. So now 70 is equal to e to the natural log of 1.3 times T. That's all still the exponent of E. Now, in order to get the exponent by itself, in other words, get rid of the E here, we need to apply the natural logs, just like we did in the previous problem. The natural log in the E will cancel out. What we get now is natural log of 70 is equal to. So now we're just left with the exponent of E, that's natural log of 1.3 times T. And from here, to give T by itself, we just have to do one more thing. And that's divide both sides by natural log of 1.3. So now we have natural log of 70 divided by natural log of 1.3. And we can throw this in the calculator. And what I get? So they want us to round to the nearest 10th. That's 16.2. So it'll take 16.2 days in order for the population to reach 70,000. That actually concludes problem three from the homework here. So let's go ahead and pull up the class notes, we'll keep going. So I did the population of a southern city, that's example two from the notes, so I'll skip that. And I will also go ahead and do problem five here. And it looks like problem six as well. Because I believe I did the other ones. Yes, so I'll do five and six. Okay. Let's go ahead and do problem five. So they tell us that the half-life is 1,690. And if 70 grams are present now, how much will be present in 680 years? So among all of that, one thing I do not read is the rate. We do not have the rates yet, which means we need to figure that out before we can do anything. So the rate, which sometimes they call it R, sometimes they call it K, it doesn't matter. It's natural log, I'll just rewrite the formula from the notes. So we need to figure out the rates first and foremost. So what does that mean for half-life? So half-life, what that refers to, well, the original amount, they tell us the original amount is 70. Which means the final amount is, well, guess what? That's going to be half, that's what half-life means. So what's half of 70? That's 35. And the amount of time for this half-life, they tell us it's 1,690. So we know exactly what to plug in. So 35 divided by 70. And all of that divided by 1,690. And this will help us determine the rate for the half-life. Now, if you plug all of this in the calculator, you're going to get a very messy answer. Which means you would, if you use the decimal version of this, which I think helped me solve this encourages you to do. I've seen help me solve this say that a few times. You can either leave it in exact form, which would be, I think the most precise way you can write this in an exact form would be to simplify 35 divided by 70. Or you can use the decimal. But if you use the decimal, you need to make sure you use a lot. 2, 3, 4, 1, 0, 1, 4, 6. You need to make sure you use a lot of decimal places, or else you will round too quickly and your answer might get skewed, especially since it's asking for the nearest thousandth here. Which means it's looking for many degrees of precision. So if you're going to use the decimal form, you need to use every decimal or every digit in the past the decimal. And so now that we have the rate, we're not done yet. So notice, we only answered everything pertaining to the first sentence. The half-life of radium is 1,690 years. We have applied that now. So now what it says, that was kind of part A of this problem, figuring out the rates. So now they're telling us 70 is still present now. How much will be present, so we don't know the final amount. And they tell us that the time is 680. They want us to know how much remains after that, and we know the rate. So now we can determine that A is equal to well, P e RT or whatever equivalent formula you'd like to use with Ks and whatever fancy notation they use. So 70 for P. The rate, now this is where the rate comes into play. You can either use the exact form or the decimal form that I wrote down. I'm going to use the exact form. But feel free to use the decimal form if you'd like. Just make sure you tell yourself that if you use the decimal form, then you need to use all the digits or a lot of the digits. The safest, the safest bet is just use all the digits. But now the final concern comes down to making sure you can plug this in the calculator correctly. And we need to three decimal places. So sometimes people don't plug this exact version in the calculator correctly. I'm going to plugging it, plug it in exactly as many parentheses as I see. I will make sure those translate to my calculator. By 1,690 times 680, and I will close a parenthesis. And what I get? They want three decimal places, so 52.963. That's what I get. And if you were to use the decimal approximation, negative 0.000410146 times 680, you're going to get the same answer if you use the decimal approximation. So that would answer this problem. And so I'll do number six as well. Which is fairly similar, in fact, the first part of it is the exact same. So they tell us that the half-life is 5,600 years. So again, we're going to start off by finding the rate. So the rate, remember, that's natural log of A divided by P divided by the time. The problem here is that they don't tell us what the initial amount is. So they don't say, they don't really have any concrete numbers for what the original weight is. They only tell us ratios, so half-life and 69%. So we can use that ratio to our advantage. So notice before, when we had half-life in the previous problem, what we ended up having was natural log of a half. That is not a coincidence, there's a reason why that happened. It's because the ratio between the final and the original amount is going to be a half, because this is half-life. And the time is 5,600. So we actually don't even need. So we don't even need the the initial value and final value. We just need the ratio. So it's again, it's natural log of 0.5 because the ratio between the final and the original is half. And so again, you can leave this form or you can plug this in and use the decimal version if you enjoy that that form a little bit better. Negative 0.000123776. So you can use either form. I tend to use the exact form, but you're welcome to use the decimal form as well. And then it goes on to say, so this was the first part. So then it goes on to say, so when did the tree die? Going on with 69% of this carbon 14 expected in this living matter. So a bunch of buzzwords ultimately. And so what they want us to do, so given this formula, they want us to somehow figure out what T is for time. Now, what what they're telling us again is they're giving us another ratio. Because the first thing we would do if we had numbers plugged in is we would divide both sides by P. We've done that in the previous problems when we solve for time. What they're doing is they're telling us that the ratio between A and B, A and P will be 69%. Or in other words, 0.69. And we know that the rate is natural log of 0.5 divided by 5,600. And T is just T. Or feel free to use the decimal version if you please. But from here, we need to get rid of E by applying the natural log. Because that natural log and that E cancel. And so now we have natural log of 0.69 is equal to natural log of 0.5 divided by 5,600 times T. And from here, we would ultimately multiply both sides by 5,600 and divide by natural log of 0.5 to get T by itself. Or if you use the decimal approximation, you don't have to worry about this. You just divide by that decimal approximation. And in either situation, what And in either situation, what you should get natural log of 0.5. So this is to the nearest whole number, so that's 2, 9, 9, 8 is what I get. So 2, 9, 9, 8 should be about what you get. And that would conclude problem six from the homework. So as we go a little bit further, you notice that, so I talked about example four or problem seven from the homework in example four. And then I also talk about problem eight in example three. And I talk about problem nine from the homework in example five. I talk about problem 10 in example seven, it looks like. So we'll probably be working on problem 11 here. Actually, no, I did problem 11 here. Okay, so I talked about problem 11, so I'm going to skip that. We're gonna go ahead and do problem 12 because this one's a little bit odd-looking. So yeah, I didn't talk about problem 12, so let's go ahead and do that. It looks like I will have to create another blank document. Okay. So what they first do is they tell us that L is equal to 10 times log of, it looks like i, times 10 to the 12. And dB is just decimals, so I'm not going to write down that part. It's not a variable, it's just a label. And so this problem looks weird because they're throwing a bunch of intensity, decimals, sound, and all this stuff. What they tell us, though, is that the sound level is 80. And they go on to ask, what value of i gives a sound of 80? Well, here, L represents decimals. And they tell us that we have 80 decimals. So really, what we're doing is we're setting the whole problem equal to 80. And we're trying to solve for i. And if it makes you feel any better, you can replace the i with an x, because that's ultimately what it is. It's just symbolism. So the first thing we have to do, since the x is trapped in a logarithm, we have to think about unraveling the logarithm using an exponent. But before we can rewrite as an exponential, we need to divide both sides by 10 to get the logarithm by itself. So 80 divided by 10 is just 8. And now that we have the logarithm by itself, we can go ahead and rewrite the logarithm as an exponential. But the problem is, we start with the base. We wrap around what everything's equal to, and we point here. But the problem is, there's no base. There's not a base written there, so where do we start? Well, the base is understood to be 10. If they don't write a base, then it's understood to be 10, which tells us we start at 10. What the logarithm is equal to will tell us the exponent of the base. And then all that is set equal to x times 10 to the 12. And from here, to get x by itself, we just simply need to divide both sides by 10 to the 12. So x is equal to 10 to the 8 divided by 10 to the 12. And we should get a nice answer here. In fact, the one that I have written down already. So I'll just go ahead and rewrite that. 0, 0, 1. And that would be the answer for this problem. So moving forward, let's go ahead and see what else. So I did problem 13 in my part two video. The number of students. So I don't think I did this problem. Uh, let me see. Okay, so I didn't do 14. I did 15. And 16 is very similar. I'll probably do 17 as well. Okay, so let's do 14 here. All right, so we'll go ahead and do 14. So they give us this logistic model. So I talked about logistic models in actually parts one and two of the lecture series. And so what they're asking us to do, so the number of students infected, they were able to model it using a logistic model. And they want to know how many days will the school close at this rate? And the school closes when 700 of the 800 students are infected. So we are ultimately looking for time here, which is t. So we want to know when 700 students get infected. So we are setting the equation equal to 700, and we are solving for t. Now, this is a good amount of algebra. So the first thing we have to do is cross-mulally or multiply by the common denominator. So that's 700 times 1 plus 49 e to the negative 0.3t is equal to 800. And you can either distribute the 700 or divide both sides by 700. It really doesn't matter either way. I guess I will distribute. So 700 times 1 is 700. And then 700 times 49 is 34300 e to the negative 0.3t is equal to 800. From here, we can, so you cannot add the 700 and the 34,300 together because that breaks order of operations. Instead, you have to subtract 700, to subtract 700 here. And so what that gives us is 343, 0, 0, e to the negative 0.3t is equal to just 100. And now this form should look very familiar. We need to get e by itself by dividing both sides by 34,300. So that's e to the negative 0.3t. And so the fraction gives us a really messy decimal. So it's up to us whether we want to use an exact form. So the exact form, the simplified form would be 1 divided by 343. Or if you want to use the decimal form, make sure you use a lot of digits, 2, 9, 1, and it goes on. So normally, to be as safe as possible, you use every digit the calculator provides. I'm going to keep the exact answer, but if you use the decimal, it will work perfectly the same. So from here, to get rid of the e, we apply ln. So hopefully, this should seem familiar by now. Because ln and e cancel, and that leaves us with negative 0.3t, which is equal to natural log of 1 divided by 343. And from here, all we have to do is divide both sides by negative 0.3. And from there, we can figure out the answer. Natural log of 1 divided by 343, close parentheses, divided by negative 0.3. What I get, they want the nearest whole number, I get 19. We get 19 for number 14. So decent amount of algebra. So if you follow these steps, you should be fine. So 15 and 16 are very similar. After 15 minutes. So try to figure out, so I did 15, and 16 is very similar to it. So try to figure out 16 on your own. I'll go ahead and conclude with number 17 here. So regardless of what all this stuff says for number 17, they do give us a formula towards the very end. M is equal to 8.8 plus 5.1 log of d. And so it seems as though m is the magnitude. And d here represents the, I think it said diameter somewhere. Yeah, diameter d in inches. And so then they just end up telling us what is the highest magnitude. So that means we're looking for m that is visible with a 117-inch telescope. So it sounds like they immediately tell us the diameter. So it sounds like for this problem, they're just telling us that d is 117. So really, all there is to do, just plug in 117 for d, and let's see what happens here. So they want one decimal place, so I get 19.3. That's it. That's all they want here. So that's a pretty easy problem. And that really concludes all the problems that I did not discuss in my video lecture. So I'll go ahead and conclude the video here.